Other than many fires this year, it's more the evening of November sixteenth. We're going into open sessions. I have a roll call.
Director Kaiserman.
Yeah.
Director Brennan.
Here.
Director Oden.
Here.
Director Gilchrist.
Here.
Mr. Chairman of the Forum has been established.
You want to join me? I'd like to leave you in place.
Welcome to the leaders. To what? Every minute of the city. And through the building, which is one inch and another five, indivisible, with literal changes.
Do I have my emotions? You'll pick the agenda.
I'll do your good agenda in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody. Everybody down there. Next item on the agenda is ceremonial presentation to.
Your back in these. So, you know, I think most of boards were that. Says. Don't leave me yet.
You're not going with that one.
I think most boards were that Rebecca used to take the job of City Folsom, so she believed us. And we just really wanted to reach out and recognize you back then. I think that, you know, a lot of the guys know Rebecca from, hey, she's coming down to take pictures of Station twenty-five, just working on the usability study. And really, we kind of entered into this public safety building concept. Chief Joe Renn and I, we kind of stood right here, following Rebecca's lead, do what she says. And she's just been a workhorse on getting that move forward for us. But there's a lot of other things that Rebecca has done for us as an agency that a lot of the guys maybe not know. You know, when Chief Williams and I kind of pointed out that, hey, there's the wall at Station twenty-eight this winter. Well, okay, well, what do we do with this? You know, I mean, phone a brand. Next thing you know, the plans, you know, blueprints out on the floor at twenty-eight, and we're, you know, going through like what we're doing. A lot of callers personally called, so really helping us out with that. And we've done seventeen issue with the simple things. There was, there was a door crews needed, and we started looking at the plans on it. It was like the architect and design guys were like, well, we're gonna have this, we're gonna have that. Chief Williams aren't talking, it's like, this could be a fifteen thousand dollar door that the crews need. So we're not scratching, right? Spend money, do we not spend money? If we don't, you know, the functionality of the station. And we had like a little echo, what's Rebecca's friends again? Let's call her. So, call her back this round, and she comes up three hundred dollars later, this is all you need to do, crews have the door. So it's all those little things, but also we've always kind of been front and center with Rebecca and her thoughts on what we're doing. We started working on the trip to Green project. You know, we had a seat at the table right off the bat with how does, how does this trip to Green, which is when during the holiday traffic, they wanted to have a soft lights. Green, they're all used to us to traffic. So, you know, we're there, and Rebecca is always in those meetings, like, is that what we're doing? Is that what we're for? One of the things that came up when we started talking about trip to Green, and this is kind of the dedication part, where Rebecca intervened against us. I said, well, hey, if they trip those and they've got them manually flipped to green, do our preemptive devices override that when the crews need to go get across? And we kind of let you look at it, nobody did. So, nine o'clock, ten o'clock at night, because you, you can't run a test on that in the middle of the afternoon, because you've got engines going to come through across the street. So we met up there at nine, ten o'clock at night, running Engine twenty-five back and forth, we'll try it again, come back through again. And we got it all worked out, but, you know, she, she's at eight to five Monday through Friday, we're out there, ten o'clock at night, playing traffic lights. So, we really just wanted to, to recognize Rebecca. She is somebody who, city engineer, really, I would consider probably the, the closest thing to a firefighter. She's part of our family, so we have a plaque that we put.
Thank you.
And then we have a plaque that, that we have put together.
Right?
So with our deepest appreciation, we hereby recognize Rebecca News and sincere gratitude for your hard work, dedication, valuable contributions. You're appreciated and appreciated. For your unwavering support for your fellow partners.
Thanks, brother.
And a little gift. We'll always. Really truly, you know, firefighter to hear that, because we truly appreciate everything you do for us. Every, everything, every project you call us, guys. Maybe you're, you're gonna call him, Brian.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I just, from the bottom of my heart, I just really thank you for everything you do and everything you guys do. How you protect our community, what you do for us on a regular basis. You guys are running to the emergency whenever you just want to. Not lost them that you do have. And I just really appreciate everything that you guys do. And we're not done with the public safety building. He has my phone number, you guys will get it, but it's just gonna get your best, you know, I'm sorry for that, but it will, it will come. And I just, I just sincerely appreciate you guys have the, just, he is, he's a diamond. And, you know, we just, we got a lot done around here, and, you know, I'm never that far away.
I'll be gone. Certainly yours.
So, thank you very much. This means a lot to me, and to you guys all, and to you, and just thank you for serving our community.
Ceremonial. So we do have two new PAOs for the district, and we will have them come forward for us right now. We have Andrew Pryor and Alex Prince. They came onto the agency. Oh, one, one donkey I said one. So, there are, there are two of the, this personnel that came along behind with three of our PAOs. They've transitioned the bridge process, but they're becoming part of our training. So we are these three line young gentlemen to tobacco and behind us, and we use to, in their magistrate. So just a little bit of a history and background on Andrew Pryor. Andrew Pryor is twenty years old, and he lives in back in Old California. He began his EMS career in two thousand and sixteen as an EMT while pursuing an undergraduate in Grand Sacramento State. His passion for EMS continued, and led him to obtain his paramedic license in two thousand and twenty. During that time, Andrew worked for private nine-one-one EMS operation in Contra Costa County. Andrew has a passion for anything with wheels or gear, and has led him to stop being a four driver. His passion for helping others, excited to provide care and service to the people that love them. And I'm gonna go ahead and, and there it is, out there, Prince too, and then we'll introduce him square. So, out there, Prince is twenty-three years old. He grew up in Gold River, California. Alex currently resides just down the road, in La Ronda Hills. Alex's studying completed two associate degrees at Folsom College before attending GT Paramedic School at MCTI. He worked previously in Sacramento and Grand Rapids, both in GT and at Paramedic. In his spare time, Alex has a passion for hunting and fishing with a farm. He loves hiking and cycling on trails, working in the garden, and being with his friends and family. Alex is grateful for the opportunity to serve the community here in La Ronda County, and is excited to see where he's going to go. So, that's beautiful. And you have, and you're. You please raise your right hand, if you have. I, State Chairman.
Aye, aye, I like that.
You saw, at least where.
I follow my direction.
That I'm supporting the then.
I'm supporting the then.
The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Former and the United States.
Former and the United States.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the policies of the overall county by district, and all of these details are county by district. That I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation, without any mental reservation or purpose to evasion.
There are, there are.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of a permanent.
Discharge the duties of a permanent.
Upon which I am.
Upon which I am.
So.
Is there anything other you'd like to say? Our board of directors. This is your moment.
We're very happy to be here, very proud to be part of this department, and we look forward to in years of service. Ever since I moved up here, this is where I wanted to work, and I'm beyond the set, exact features. I look forward to it.
For friends and family, you're welcome. You stay here for us in the board meeting, if you'd like to, if you want to send us stuff on a model. Understood.
Good. That's true, yeah.
We're ready.
All right. Sounds like a Sunday. I'm just having the same calendar. All items approved on a single vote except those full, or if there's a little discussion, and then. But I think we talked to minor ones.
Yeah.
Um, the, the two-by-one meeting was, the record run down myself, word problem, it wasn't due by myself.
And then the other, the event was the Shingos Springs Cameron Park event, just. That's it. Two by one.
Well, my, uh, two changes. Remember, everybody. Uh, do I have any questions? We'll prove the second. About a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Moving on to item A, public comment. Any wish, any person wishing to address the board on any item that is not on the agenda, may do so at this time. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Kathy, do you have anybody online? Anybody out, the audience have anything? Okay. Moving on to item nine, report of action taken in close session. And the board discussed the labor negotiations and gave directions to the HR committee. Item ten, departmental matters, administrative, CFD tax rates discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is kind of the next step in the CFD process that the district is working on. As you recall, the last meeting, the board approved the goals and policies, and Kathy from CFP was, was there explaining, hey, the next step went through, sorry, discussions about the tax rate and apportionment. Kathy is here today to kind of walk me through that, what the process is. I'll give you a little bit of ease, that there's no decision in these. She's gonna be providing you the information, and then, again, she'll glean direction from you and be coming back in future.
Just take one down. So, what our next step in the process is, is to start talking through the potential tax rate. So we, we discussed last time, starting with the Diamond Springs rate and applying it to the parameters that you created in your goals and policies. So you remember the goals and policies? We created the structure where you'd have a single-family tax rate, the multifamily would be a percentage of the single-family. ADUs, those accessory dwelling units, would be a percentage of the single-family. The non-residential would be on a tax on a square foot basis, but equivalent to a twenty-five hundred square foot, single-family residential parcel. And there would be a discount for low-hazard, non-residential structures, and a premium for high-hazard, non-residential structures. So what the sheet is in front of you is not your tax rates. This is to start our discussion about what the tax rates could be if we use the Diamond Springs rate as a base. And so the first row shows the single-family residential of six hundred and seventy-five dollars. There's currently, is it six seventy-three and change, because it adjusts for inflation. Usually when you're moving forward, you kind of start with a rounder number. So I've applied the six hundred and seventy-five dollars. That would be essentially the equivalent tax rate of Diamond Springs. You'll see the next row is the multifamily. It would, based on that structure we talked about, the goals and policies, we could bring it in at eighty percent. Bring it in seventy-five percent. There's some flexibility there on what you would have the multifamily rate be. Usually a multifamily rate is somewhere between seventy-five and eighty percent of that single-family rate. So right now, I'm showing it at eighty. And that's per unit, so each of these would be per unit. So let's talk about on the single-family. On a single-family, if it's a parcel with two residential units, each one would be imposed the six hundred and seventy-five dollars a year. It's not a monthly rate, it's an annual rate. On a multifamily, if it's a ten-unit complex, each unit would be imposed five hundred and forty dollars. So it would be a five thousand dollar tax bill for that property owner. Accessory dwelling units, this is kind of a newer concept. Right now, people are kind of, districts are putting it in around fifty percent, but there's no, I don't have enough of a pattern to tell you what a reasonable rate would be. Fifty percent seems to be the concept in that those spaces are homes that will be occupied. There is going to be a level of service you're providing. Oftentimes, they're considered granny flat units, where you may have parents that are in there that would need emergency response. So this fifty percent is kind of where people are landing. We don't have a lot of data to support that figure. That's just where agencies are landing. This is something where you could set it at a threshold over time. I think I mentioned to start with, you set a maximum tax rate, you can impose something less. It would take board resolution to do that. So you may want to set it at a maximum. If your service demand on these units is higher than anticipated, you would be capped at the fifty percent mark. But if it's lower than anticipated, you could reduce that amount. So that's something to think about. With an accessory dwelling unit, there's usually already a single-family home on the parcel, so they would already be paying that first line item. So does that, if there's a single-family home plus accessory dwelling unit, it would be line one, the six seventy-five plus the three thirty-seven fifty for that parcel.
If there's an existing unit right there on the parcel right now, and it's not new construction.
It's not new construction.
So, but then, if you add an ADU.
It would be, correct. Only the new one would apply. So it's only for new developments, but if it's both of them going in, we have a lot of development, like in my area, I live kind of unincorporated Blaster County. And we have a lot that they're actually building, single-family homes with an ADU, so they're building them that way. And in this theory, it would be both of them, but you're right, if there's adding the ADU, it would just be the one rate. Because whatever exists today is not, is not subject to taxation. On the non-residential side, basically an office building, any type of standard, or restaurant, any type of standard, non-residential structure would be taxed at the twenty-seven cents per square foot. If it's twenty-five hundred square feet, that's six hundred and seventy-five dollars. So you can see the equivalency there. If it's larger, it would be taxed at a higher rate. If it's smaller, it'd be taxed at a lower rate. The, the thinking of that is the size of the commercial building impacts the service that you're providing. And that's actually kind of the typical structure, is that non-residential is taxed on a per-square-foot basis. As you can imagine, you can get some pretty large office buildings, and they should have a proportional increase in the amount that they're paying. Another layer that we included on our goals and policies was that we would provide some type of credit for low-hazard occupancies. And so I put this in just in, for discussion purposes, at fifty percent of the non-residential rate. But then high-hazard occupancies would pay a premium. It's double, two hundred percent of the, of the non-residential rate. Those are the things that I wanted to talk through with you today. Number one, I want to get some feedback from you, just on where these rates are. Again, this is where diamonds are. The reality is, you can move forward with these rates. If you're getting a lot of pushback, if you're feeling like it's too high, by resolution, the board can impose something less, even if the properties are already on the tax roll. So you could set this rate, get some feedback, and then come back even a year later and say, yeah, even for these that are on there, we want to lower it. Or you may feel comfortable at this rate level and move forward. I wouldn't recommend necessarily doing something much higher. I would try to keep it on par with Diamond. One of the questions that I brought up last time that I get from a lot of boards is, where does this fall? What do other agencies charge? And I'd love to just say, oh, yeah, everybody charges five hundred dollars. It's all over the board. You could be a district this size charging two hundred, you could be a district this, this size charging seventeen hundred a year. The taxes are all over the board. Because these do not need to be specifically justified through an engineering study, that engineering analysis, there's a little bit more flexibility. This is not going to fund the entire cost of service. That's something else to think about, is you're not even mitigating a hundred percent of the impact of the development. So, when you talk about justification, one of the big concerns is, oh, well, we're not, we're not justifying. Well, wait, the cost of service is up here. You couldn't tax at a rate high enough to actually meet the cost of the survey. That's something that I want to make sure that you're, you understand, that this isn't going to fund a hundred percent of the cost of the service to serve these new development units. It's a fraction of that. Their property taxes make up some of it, but frankly, there's, you just aren't going to be able to make it up with the existing property tax system. So I do want to get feedback from the board on the rate to start with, and then some of these percentages where we have some flexibility. So we don't, there's nothing set in stone that you have to charge eighty percent on the multifamily, or fifty percent on an ADU, or even that the non-residential subsidies and premiums need to occur. Those are just the things that we put forth in the goals and policies, and we need to just talk through it before we implement the rate method of apportionment. So with that, I'd like to just get some of your initial feedback as individual board members, and then see if we can come to some consensus on how we want to move forward with these tax rates.
So I would say the multifamily residential. I, that's definitely one of the ADUs for me, but the ones that need to be high. Reason being with the multifamily residential, you have, depending on your area, due to socioeconomic issues and all that, calls for service are greater. You get what is the big boom right now, which is the care facilities.
Yeah.
And in fact, to speak, you know, just in a building, Cameron Park, I mean, they are running the butt off on, on, on the Almero and memory here, and all these other things. Calls for service are the highest, and the cost for the service, like as you noted, you're never getting there, something's got to offset. And then, I guess, Chief Gallagher, I think, used these, your, your big target has more of my family, gold country. We all knew the call volume there, what are you really, you know? And it's hard, you can't go back and readjust that. So that's why, you know, you cannot ring that bell. I'd say that we go as high as we are comfortable going, because we'll never be able to go back and recoup that money. This is the only opportunity, and whether we will get that growth in the district, I would say yes. You look at the growth of that particular industry, just talking of the elder care, issues alone is going to be significant, not to mention all the other parts of it. They're covered in multifamily. ADUs, I could see ADUs being a thing of the future, and just for all the various reasons, the cost and taxes up, that, that's one that I think, and especially in the district. Most, not all, people have a bit of property so they can build an ADU. They're not stuck on a residential lot for the most part. It's very difficult to do so. So I could see that as an, as an item, moving forward, where you're going to see a lot of growth. And the fact that, as you noted, we have a, a current residential structure there that is not taxed, cannot go back and be taxed under these, but they can build an ADU. So I'm just seeing that as, as the way they can capture some reimbursement for the services that we're getting, and, and will, those will cause calls for service. So to me, out of all of these, those are the two, in my opinion, targets to go high on, and then the other ones, we, you know, we could look at and think around. I think the residential commercials type stuff, I think, would kind of, I think, be in the ballpark. I think, for the director of duty with his experience in that, you know, especially calls and services, depending, again, what that particular facility is, but those might be two points.
You know, on multifamily, they, like in Placerville right now, they're building some low-income houses. So if we, it's almost a higher rate, that is not going to affect the construction of those kind of things. I don't know. I may just probably get out there. They're low income.
I think if they're building. Off of, now, those, we would not be able to catch.
Yeah, but, but I'm saying, if you have low-income housing, or if you're building apartment buildings, or you're getting market rate, that's something different.
But, but they're getting hut housing, they're getting a federal reimbursement to offset the cost of that. So that is the only, yeah, we don't want to kill the bodies, correct? But then, a flip side, like I mentioned, is, this, is, this calls and service are going to be great, just due to the socioeconomic, but, I mean, it just, it is what it is, you know, so.
What is Diamond's multifamily rate, is it eighty percent? Was it certainly five and the way down?
I don't know. I just looked it up, I had it. I believe it is at eighty.
I mean, we want to be consistent, even though they're going to be two separate.
They're at the same rate. They're at the same rate.
It's, again, it's rounded, so it's not the exact number. So this is a rounded number, because there's a situation adjustment, but it's just under five hundred and forty dollars.
But they're using the eighty percent.
They're using eighty percent.
I think if we stayed with the same percentage, it makes it a little more consistent, we as well, it did, as opposed to nothing with that.
That, just to compare diamonds, the big discrepancy is actually in the non-residential. Diamond's non-residential is actually half of this. And that's one that I've always wanted to adjust. So, Diamond's non-residential is half of the equivalent, single-family. That's a hard justification, in that, I'm not sure your call volume would, especially when you look at the fire side, how, how you can actually differentiate in that manner. So I would rather you have them on an equivalent basis, and we talked about this with the goals and policies. So that's the big discrepancy here, and there is no ADU on Diamond's. That doesn't, that is not a category that exists.
That doesn't, wasn't around.
And they, and they just have a fixed non-residential, there are layers to it.
So that non-residential is way lower, so, and that's where we're going to get most of the new construction, at least some of the big boxes happening, right?
They just have a lot of big boxes.
No, but there is going to be.
Yeah, yours is, they just don't have that type of development, so that might be something else to think about. Maybe theirs really is low-hazard, and that's an appropriate level. That you're.
That Missouri flat area, all of them, that will be under our new rate schedule, right?
If, if the annexation.
Yeah, when the annexation, if the annexation goes through, then we'll be taking.
Properties that are currently within Diamond's CFD, they would stay at whatever rates, everything they're at. Everything else in our district, and that if we're annexing to Diamond, those new developments would all gather in one.
Everything else in our district, and then if we're annexing to Diamond, those new developments would all gather in one.
Exactly.
All the new developments. The new developments.
From the point of annexation.
Right, from the point of acquisition, so. Yeah, I mean, that makes sense, charging more, right?
Yeah, I think, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with Director Brunton, I think, um. Those two, those two categories are the two that are going to probably. What they do now on one of them, the other one, the ADU, is probably going to provide some of our higher call volume numbers. Um, you know, the, the demographics on ADUs is going to be probably some percentage of, of uh. ARBOs and some percentage of, of, it's, yeah, in-law quarters or something like that. And, but I would think based, based on our demographics, the high percentage of retirees that we have in our county. We're more likely to see a lot more of the family members filling in a lot of those ADUs. Just based on the, on that demographic, our call volume is going to be higher to those units probably. So I, I, I'm, I mean, I'm in favor of let's set the bar a little bit higher, we can always come back and reduce it if we start to get low back from it. But I think, I think, um, if we start out, we're setting our bar a little higher, the multifamily when. To me, to me, it ought to be a hundred percent. And I, I'll tell you, one, the only reason I say that is, that is, that is the. Uh, property type that is probably our highest level of call volume. And typically who owns those facilities, yeah.
So there's an interesting thing. Well, I say a lot of them are tax exempt, but there's something we can do, so some of those senior facilities are actually categorized as non-residential. So your county has a separate use code for residential care facilities. And it's technically in the commercial category in the, where they have a use code system, it's got the residential at the top and it's commercial and industrial. The residential care homes in particular are listed under commercial. We could put them at a high hazard residential, non-residential rate. I'm just throwing, not that I, we could technically do that. We would need to define that in the RMA, in the rate method of apportionment. So if you pulling out multifamily itself, we cannot do low income, if you can't, that is not a characteristic we can evaluate. So it's just a true multifamily is categorized by the counties of multifamily residents. We would be, you don't have to do eighty percent, we could talk about that in a minute, but we can't differentiate between low income, we just can't do that. But if it is simply a not, a residential care home that the county categorizes as a commercial property. We can put them in any of our non-residential categories, and in the rate method, we can call it out as a specific use code, cite the county's classification. And categorize it as a high hazard, non-residential structure.
That, that definitely, because that is a high call volume, and then, so there's, there's some of the, so it's. If it's an assisted care, I can see it falling in that category, but if you have senior living, which is considered multifamily, it's just like an apartment. So, but that creates a call volume as itself, you know, and the ones that blow and all that. So I think that's a good concept, is that those other ones don't get loophole, that end up causing, you know. They, they don't pay, they pay less, and we're going there more.
Are we talking about EMS and we talked about the fire?
Majority of EMS.
Majority EMS, but because of the. But it's, that's a GP. Never said any engine that has fire district paid EMTs and power backup. Uh, and then also you do with elderly care or elderly, or so, um. Senior living, independent senior living, you have a high percentage of other, um, on medical. Fires, you know, even simple food on the stove, you know, there's, there's a lot of that that goes on. Um, so that's the stuff we don't, and, reason I know just having, having lived that in other areas and, um. And just even talking to, to, especially this, talking to people like Rockland and Roswell Fire Park that I know. And those places are exploding, um, and, and huge facilities, and there's, there's a huge amount of call volume there. Uh, first, my parents live in a, a senior living in Rockland. I don't know how many times I've been sitting there visiting and how many times I've seen a Rockland engine or two times, two Rockland engines there at the same time dealing with. EMS or food and stove, all those issues, all the, all that kind of stuff, so it is a call. And then knowing that can't afford the high call volume there is, it's just pretty heavy on the, this.
So we need to, so you need to define with low and high hazard.
So that I would like to use, I would like to defer to some more national standards and, and, and I'll let you speak to it. Really is where I start to get out of my area of expertise, but, but this is defined, this is, this is an arbitrary.
And we work with uh, the fire protection officers.
It's, it's defined, I know National Fire Protection Association has classifications. And we would define it administratively, this would, that would actually not be defined in the rate method. You would actually have written that the chief or the chief's designee would assign a category, the classification, uh, based on the type of, of development. And there would be a source document, so it's not just an arbitrary, I like them, so I'll put them below, uh, it would be a source document. Everything, everything we need to tie, and that's why we really can't do the differentiation for low income, because we've got to tie it to a county database that doesn't track it that way. Uh, I, I want to talk about kind of where we were on multifamily and the ADUs. Eighty percent is, is not a hard and fast number, it doesn't have to be, could you do a hundred percent? Yeah, you, you could do a hundred percent if that's what you feel is important here, um, so that is something that your board has discretion on. Typically, when you're looking at this type of CFD, there is some type of, it's not really a discount, but then. The, uh, there, it is charged at a lower rate than the traditional single family, but there's nothing in the law requiring it to be at that level. I mentioned on the ADUs, we don't have a lot of them, so it's not like we could say, oh, this district does this and this district does that, everybody's just talking about it now. So who's to say you can set the standard of that being seventy-five percent? Uh, and there's no, there's nothing there, you kind of, this is a way of the magic wand one, where we don't have the data, if you set it higher, you can adjust it later. Based on what you actually see the, the call volume to be, so that might be how we set it up. And you set it up at a higher rate, and then if you are seeing on a manual basis, we talk about it. And if you're seeing that it's, it's not really proportional to what we're seeing in the true call volume, maybe we reduce it and you charge something less. Uh, we would talk about whether that would be applied retroactively or it would just be from that point forward, but that's an annual discussion the board could have.
So we're going to have two CFDs, we're going to have one for us and one for the city.
Correct.
So I know, in fact, in the city, the ADUs, unless you're in the commercial zone, which is the section of them, you put it anywhere else. You can't use it for uh, short-term rentals. They restrict the short-term rental, so you can't do Airbnb unless it's thirty-one days or more. And so, and there's people violating that all over the place, so.
Today, yeah.
Today.
And, and like I pointed out earlier, is in the city, how many parcels?
Not that many.
That, that you, that you, Ryan, I see it more on the rest of the district. When you look around the rest of the district, there's a ton of areas that could end up putting, I know definitely high division, most people have. So potential, could ADUs, and, and that is, I think that is where things are going to be.
Well, and I, I will validate that, in my district, almost every new construction that's being built right now has an ADU.
Yeah, that's what I've seen too, and, and unless you're in an incorporated area. I am seeing everything being built, and there's these beautiful ranch homes they're building, and there's a little ADU on the side, I've seen almost everything built with an ADU. It's very interesting, unless it's in city limits and then you've got smaller lots and that's not happening.
Yeah, I, I say, you know, I think that we do have that ability that we, that we will hide on it, go hide on it, and have the ability. Um, back up, as we, I mean, we, some of us are trying to want us, we don't know, and I'd hate for us to. Get into something solid where we can't go back to every, uh, I'd rather, the fact that we get there, say, you know what? We, we into a high, or, you know, capital back, I would rather do that than go G B into a lot of it.
So what are we thinking, go seventy-five percent on the ADUs? Are we going to put multifamily all the way at a hundred percent?
So on the multifamily, i- isn't there some relative of compounding, and, and I'm just thinking all sides of it, so. Um, let's say you have a fourplex, right? That's a uh, multifamily, right? And so that, uh, that per unit, that's not just square unit, per unit. And um, that, that would generate, what would that be, uh? Two thousand eighty bucks is what that would generate to those four, and let's just say the square footage is the same size as a single family. Is that disproportionate from a square footage point?
And that's versus fires, the conversation.
Certainly the call volume, but is it? I guess is a proportion, that's what I, for me, I, I would need some understanding on that, so that I could.
What's, what's the range of those? Like, well, Diamond Springs is at eighty right now, right?
Yeah.
I, I would suggest we stay at eighty, especially if they don't have an ADU during the. So I, I'd say we go seventy-five on that, that's fine, I think, I, I don't think we should be too much of a differential. Plus, we got to get this by the city.
City does the same. I think we're, and cooking ourselves there, I think, I just need that, that, just personal experience and I, I knew, or, or the personal experience. That's your call volume, that is going to be where you're running the wheels off the engine, you burn the fuel, you're doing all those things. That's the call volume, that is where the cost doing business is high. If, if there's multiple trips, even if it's just basically getting there in EMS part, whatever. Just the basic, look how much the fuel's up, the tire, I mean, the civilties, the wear and tear on apparatus. Those add up very quickly, and, and those are the calls, if you're just spinning, you're just going to those calls, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And I, I just think it, it, it's a cost, and there, and the other issue is, there's significantly higher risk than a single family. You know, I mean, in my former, my, my life, every multiple alarm fire we had was in a multi-unit. For the most part, yeah, if it was multiple alarm, it was in a, it was in a, in a commercial building or a whole.
When you're building new construction now, everything's got sprinklers, I mean. We're not burning a whole building. But I mean, I don't know, maybe you are.
When you go back to, you know, the senior director, your guys brought up, hey, it could actually be the same pattern, square footage, but. You had a residential home with four people in it, and then you have a fourplex in the same square footage. You've got four times its people under fire load, that's four times the risk, that's much, you know, all those can compound, so. That, that needs to be a consideration, the call, the call volume will be higher at risk under fires.
I see that, that makes sense to me, I, I can see where, um, going to two detached houses that are in two separate properties. If you had fire here one day and the next day this one happened, never mind, but um, you would have that same level, but having. Multiple kitchens and a. Yeah, that, that, that resonates with me, I understand, the, the risk is. Yeah, yeah, I can see that.
All right, for example, let's see, have any public comments out there on this issue? Tom, I see you shaking your head, yes or no?
The reason, the reason for CFD, um. Uh, I understand is because consolidation, probably going to go forward, I mean, you can say, but. Uh, I'll go back and say as a taxpayer now, that uh. Why can't you live within your means? Uh, you're only putting the CFD in for future development. And you're saying the taxes that, that developments are paying is not sufficient to support your service.
Is that the truth?
That is correct.
And do I see a text at any place that says that?
Without the, uh, so that, this isn't an impact, so there, there's a little bit of a difference there. Um, but the, the, the theory is with the CFD, every increment of new development is going to degrade the service of the existing community. And that's what they're trying to mitigate for, is degradation in service for the existing taxpayers. Um, the costs provide the additional service is, of course, the incremental. So as every new unit comes on, is it really going to increase the call volume substantially? No, but there's only an incremental additional revenue that's coming. So this, the intent is to mitigate the impact of the development itself, as opposed to degrading the level of service for the existing residents. That's the concept of it, because you're not going to have enough development to start, this isn't where we've got planned communities, we're going to be building fire stations. You're servicing with your existing network, and so the more development you have, the less resources that you can apply to the existing residents.
But those new residents. These property are here, and you pay taxes.
They do, and, and that, yes, and but combined.
Meantime, you just made my process a homeowner that much higher per year. Uh, it's not a one-time cost, as development has used to be, uh, you're doing a tax every year on that piece, on that development. Uh, or on that piece of property that's higher than, uh, if the neighbors pay. Again, we're looking at any unankable taxes where everybody lives in the county.
I think, Chief, what I might add is, is if, if you look at the, um, the TRAs that were set. Back, when they were set in this county, and a lot of the areas in the county, there, there's areas where it's single digit, the fire park receives. And in our district, it'd be average about. Doesn't fund the tax rate, just look forward, the fire service of today, it probably was adequate back in the. You know, sixties and seventies when those were developed, where it was, you know, primarily volunteer. Trying to make that gap up.
It, it would be.
Easy to say then that you should, we go back and say, we'd like to raise your tax rate from the.
Yeah, that's, that's why we're looking at alternatives, okay, we've gone down that road, that's a hard no, we already, the board has said that. So what other opportunities do we have, and yeah, it does put some of it on the backs of new development, new construction, but. As has already stated, our level of service is not increasing, not adding more firefighters, not adding more stations, we're not doing. And so now the guys, the gals are spread more thin to be able to do the same job with, with more structures, more people that they're having.
And it's not going to generate a lot of revenue, this is, we're not going to see this revenue for a year.
Yeah, you're not going to see all the revenue, but that one individual that builds his new house is going to see a tiny tax rate.
And this is in every community. Cause it stops construction in a lot of places, but it's everywhere. And you have to find a revenue stream to do it, we could change the eighty-eight rates and get more out of the county and fund this, hey, I'd be for it, get rid of E-RAT. Give us back the old money. So we only have so many things that we can work on. Anybody else? Any other public comment? All right, so do we have any recommendations?
I've got a couple of questions, so on a non-residential, I have a. Some examples of that, running through my mind, and we were just talking to my neighbor, they want to put gazebo in the backyard. Is that, are they even going to put a drill? Or another guy's saying, hey, I'm going to do a workshop in the backyard. So it's, it is, but it was, so non-residential, high hazard could be like a big box for O D V, right?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Walmart, O D V.
Manufacturers.
It could be certain storage facilities as well, uh, that, that's another one that I see, but something that's a, an, add, add storage facilities.
So that's why we're, that's why we're tying it back to, back to what the fire code says. So with a fire code, so when Chief Sterling goes out and, and a new business is going in. They have to declare what that kind of occupancy is for a variety of reasons out of the fire code. Now there's a nexus between regulation and law, statute, back to, that's why you fall in that category versus another commercial category.
And that, and that's part of step one, when, when the plans are being submitted, because these are new constructed buildings. What is the building going to be? Because then the requirements that Chief Sterling has to be marshaled for the developer, those vary, they can't put that.
And then, correct me if I'm wrong, that's a really good point, is it goes in and it's a plating, you know, whatever. Personal building, high hazard, but then it gets sold and reclassified, and I guess it would be on a, it would be on a T I or something like that. Then it gets reclassified, maybe coming to a lower high hazard, or not as high hazard, or lower hazard disparity, and then that would adjust the rate.
Correct, and the property owner also would have the right to appeal, so if it was being taxed for the high hazard and they were no longer operating it as a high hazard, they could submit an appeal to the board. Um, the county also classifies properties as different categories within the commercial and industrial. Um, the county also classifies properties as different categories within the commercial and industrial uh use codes. And they are supposed to also reclassify if they're aware of a change in use. So there's kind of a three-step process. If we don't catch it on the TIs of building permits. The county doesn't catch it, there's still an appeal process that will go to the board. And that's common where, especially the larger CFDs, the property owner's gonna submit a photo. This is how we're really operating it. You're charging me as this. That's not what it is. We're we're doing something different. And usually it's handled administratively. Very rarely does it get all the way up to the board. Yeah, but that's that's something that's pretty common on how you're classifying those properties. But uh I do wanna talk about one thing on on, it's not, this isn't gonna catch everything. So I do wanna think about, somebody's gonna put. A structure in their backyard that's just looks like a a storage shed, and then they start oper- start operating a business out of it. We're not gonna catch all of those things because they're not doing it on, frankly, they're not doing it on the up and up. Uh, but there will also be a clause in there that if we become aware, so by inspection or responding to a call. And you see that they're operating a business on their property and it's not classified as a non-residential structure, it was built since our CFD was formed. And we would have the right to go back and impose it on that particular property. So there's things in there where by inspection, you discover something was was misrepresented. There's subsequent action you can take. And that isn't that common. Frankly, you usually just don't catch it. So there's things that fall through the grass. Mobile home, mobile homes added to the back of residential properties, that happens all the time. You don't catch it as a residential unit because you didn't, you don't know if that's an RV or a mobile home. That type of thing happens. So this isn't perfect. You're not gonna catch everything.
I guess. Maybe I asked a question before. Other than Diamond Springs, and now we're entertaining it, is there any other fire district in the county that is has a CFD?
That hasn't as of now, no, but I know that several are exploring the possibility. It's very common up in Placer County. And and the one that doesn't have it is South Placer, and we had a board meeting last week, and they're in the same, they're, they just adopted their goals and policies, so they're about three weeks behind you. Um, so they're the only ones over there that don't have it. Um, if you look at the cities, most of them are putting on a layer. Uh, even you mentioned Roseville, Rockland. Roseville's latest uh development plan, so that all of West Roseville. Has their infrastructure CFD with a layered public safety services CFD on the top of it. Uh, so that that was actually higher than I expected. Uh, so they're. They're all, it's their, uh, going into the valley, uh, Stanslos County, a lot of fire districts are doing it. They either have an assessment. In place, if they don't have an assessment, they have the same problems you have, and they can't get a county or a district-wide tax. They're looking at this option. Uh, there are several down there that are doing it. So it's, and then in the foothills, I mentioned in Dwelling County. They're looking at doing countywide ones for all fire services in Dwelling County. Groveland started that. They're the ones that have the really high one at seventeen hundred uh per unit. Um, but the county is looking at doing a countywide one on behalf of the fire district. So it's, it is becoming the mechanism because. There is this discrepancy as developments occurring in these areas where, again, it's not enough development to build a fire station in this master plan community. It's these bits and pieces. They're adding it on. And then even the cities are starting to do it when they are new master plan communities because the taxes are enough to fund the cost of service.
So I think, geez, I'm not gonna see the revenue for you. It'll be like eight, ten years from now, there'll be some continuation.
One of the board meetings with Cameron Park CSD, I brought one of their board members, said they had a CFD. That was inspired by emergency services.
Yeah, Karen Park, they have a couple of CFDs just like the city, but those usually lighting, landscape.
Okay, lighting, lighting, okay, okay, right.
I think there's.
Not necessarily built down.
I was just thinking, this'd be another reason if they added him. If anything happened. So I have a question for Chief Geller. So um. How many times do you guys get appeals to the CFD or or even pushback on a new development being planned?
I haven't since I've been in.
I've been thinking of one since two thousand and six. That was a low-income multifamily one. And all they could wanna do is pay it the first year they operated. That's the one I think of.
So not since I've been in the chief's position, and we've had several developments going in, multi-family. Um, had money beginning going off Panther, we had one on Black Rice, two on Black Rice. There's, and then obviously the um, just single residential going in. Nobody's said anything about the B or the plan or the deal.
I think if you look at the demographics, who's coming in and building, where they come. And this is chump change compared to where they've gotten from the bill.
I I know I talked to one of the developers that's one of your primary developers, Kristen Diamond Springs. And he actually liked this process better than some other ones that have been proposed over the years. Uh, and and he's now building, he's now doing projects here in the city and surrounding the city, so. Yeah, I I think at least from a developer standpoint, it seems like there's some relatively positive feedback. On the CFD versus other mechanisms that developers had to deal with.
Very much so. Actually, they prefer this mechanism. Um, a lot of them are due, there's a, there's two statewide. Agencies, JPAs that pool these CFDs, and the developers now are asking agencies to join these JPAs so that they can form these CFDs. Uh, and for them, they're issuing bonds and it's more complex than what we need to do, so it's not worth that for you, but. They're even requesting that the agencies are participating. It's it's a shift in in the conversation, but they like the mechanism better.
So what about communities where they're building a big planned development? Are they, are they not putting in fire stations? How are they using this mechanism to do that?
They're, most of them are typically using CFDs to fund the fire station construction. So usually with developing areas, okay, master plan communities, there's layered CFDs. So they're doing an infrastructure CFD for roads, sewers, waters. It usually reimburses the developer for the underground infrastructure. There's then a facility CFD or some other facilities funding mechanism layered on top. That funds public buildings, sometimes schools are in there, but public buildings could be parks, it could be anything that they're funding on an infrastructure basis that's not underground. And then there's often another layer on the top for public safety services, which remember is its own designation in the law, and then maintenance. And that could be a CFD or an assessment. So there usually are a few layers to it, and they're using the compilation of all of those sources to fund. The new station construction and then the operations of it. Uh, maintenance, same thing. You build a park, you've gotta get the money to maintain the park. So that's typically how these are funded and. Uh, the Roseville model is the easiest to understand because you can actually see the layers. Some of the other ones are kind of blended together, so it's harder to see it, but Roseville actually delineate each of these items uh in their approvals. So I use that as an example all the time because it's.
Don't they also, they have one for like bike paths and those stuff like that?
Those are more of the landscaping and lighting act assessments, but those would be on there also. Um, those are the ones I think that the developers like a little bit less. HOAs are also involved in some of them, I know the ones in Lincoln. They're balancing what the HOA is doing as far as maintaining parks and and paths versus what's coming out of the tax bill. For the homeowner, it's coming out of the same pocket, but those are all part of the conversation.
I'll follow up on Director Rotten's comment is um, how does this CFD compare to more metropolitan areas where people are fleeing or coming from? And would it show up as, hey, that's a bargain, or that's egregious?
So, yeah, no, that's actually good. So uh, when we look at it, we look at kind of the whole tax bill together. And when you're looking at these areas that are building, so you go to Holsom, you go to Rosevilles, uh, Rocklands, Rockland's approaching build outs, so less of a, example, Lincoln. They all set a debt burden threshold. So when we're talking about these growing areas, they set a debt burden threshold of one point eight percent of the value of the home. One percent is your general property taxes, the other point eight percent is all of these. Other taxes and assessments like CFDs or these landscaping and lighting act or school bonds, everything over the top. Once you get up to that one point eight percent debt burden, then those public agencies are saying you can't add any more to it. Here, you're not close to the one point eight percent. So when you're looking at what's a good deal, it's. The one point eight percent is happening in those larger developing areas, and that one point eight percent threshold is happening all up and down the state. That's not just a local number. That's kind of where they've hit.
So would it be a good idea just to be uh taxpayer-friendly to say, hey, we're gonna cap this to manage what thirteen, thirteen deaths? To make sure that we don't exceed it?
You're you're not even gonna be close.
No, I get it. I get it. But I'm just saying, having language there.
The tax, so we can reference, I bet if I looked at the county general plan, I bet the county general plan actually has a debt burden threshold in there. And we can make a finding in the resolution where you approve this, that you're well below the.
I think that would be.
The debt burden threshold. I would recommend putting in the, in the resolution, not in the, the tax formula.
Got it. Okay. And then one one last question is um, if there's a loss of a structure building, does the tax get in both, or is it considered that that's exempt because of. Pre-CFD?
It would be exempt if to the, if there's no structure there, it would be exempt in that tax share. If they rebuild it, it would be re-imposed in the subsequent year or whenever it is reconstructed.
Um, but let me, so let's say um.
Oh, you're talking about if it burns down and exists today?
Yes.
It would, it's exempt.
Exactly, okay.
It's exempt.
Okay.
It's only new construction that didn't previously exist. That's another, that's another piece.
And the reason I ask at the county level, they're talking about imposing this more stringent building codes on structures that were lost that. Might be historical in that, and that's that's significant uh uh burden on that person to replace that house. And so it's just being discussed.
Yeah, right up with that, if it's anywhere within Louis, which is pretty much anywhere except for city Placerville, they're having to go to the hardened standards, the blue standards. Say you had my house burned down. It'd have to be hit the blue standards, it'd have to be sprinkler.
Yeah.
Uh, and any other local uh regulations that are required uh for building that construction. So. The cost, like your replacement cost, yeah, and yeah, and and so if you're insured, there's certain things that's particularly insurance. You're in California, is that, yeah, to rebuild the house as it is currently, I might be insured enough to do that. But in reality, it won't be that because of all these regulations that now I have to follow because.
All right, so today we're just discussing this, and we have had some kind of.
I just wanted to get direction on where we were gonna land, because we're gonna take this and put it into the rate method of apportionment. After you made the approval of the last meeting for the goals and policies, we are now able to require the formation of a CFD as a, as the condition of development. In order to really move forward with that process, we have to have the rate method of apportionment written. You weren't gonna prove it until we go through that process, but I didn't want you to see it for the first time when we're on a time clock. And we have sixty days to do something. So that's what we're doing, is just trying to put together an RMA. Um, from informational purposes, we're gonna share the document with the chief and informally we'll share with the board, not for action. Um, but you would actually have it as an action item when we have the first prop, first property to form the CFD. But I just wanna make sure we have the right rates. So I just wanna recap. We're gonna start with the comparable Diamond Springs single-family rate. We're gonna leave the multifamily at eighty percent.
I would like to see it higher.
See, go higher.
I'd be willing to, you know, who would compromise this? I'd say ninety. I I would go with ninety. And again, we have the ability to to taper that down, but we can't go. And I don't wanna handcuff any future board because, as we were talking about earlier, it's a very historical. Things with with the budget, I'd just like to have that little insurance policy there that. You know, future board needs this money. And like you said, you're right, it won't be down the road, but I gosh, down the road twenty years from now. It may be very important that they have those funds available to them to continue to buy a service.
Do I see nods on ninety? I got two down.
I I I personally think we should keep that so long in the diamond.
I I I'm looking for a vision around that. I I and and I hear what you're saying.
I know what you're saying too.
Really get it. I hear you saying it. I hear, I'm just.
They're talking about a hundred and thirty five.
Where I look at, I, to help balance this is is, and I'm looking at a percentage to help balance it, and I get it being as. Close aligned with diamond as possible, but that's defendable, or an argument that's a little defendable. And then also, if it's a bargain for what's happening in another area, if we can demonstrate that, then that even makes it more defendable. And so that's, that's where I'm at with it. And then the one point eight being in there, those are the key things I would look at, because we all know this county is a uh. Uh, tax conservative county, right? I mean, it it is. And so I think being able to cover those points will be important, because I suspect. We'll probably like when my first day of Measure B, we'll be filled with people.
Well, no, this is what happened, how this works.
But I think the thing we heard in Measure B was, and and in multiple off. We have off record discussions that I had with the community during that timeframe, I think the overwhelming feedback that we got was. Then establish the foundation at the beginning, right? And don't come back and try to adjust that later on. And I think if you look at this county, you know, and having been a longtime resident here too. If you look at this county and you look at the fire service in general in this county. A lot of the decisions the fire boards have to deal with in this county are decisions that occurred a long time ago that they didn't look forward. And so I think we have an opportunity to look forward. And and. As Director Rotten said, we're we're not setting something that can't be. Back down if we need to, but um. You you look at, you just look at, you look at the. What's potentially gonna be new development in our district and in our county, frankly. And you look at where those call volume demands are gonna come from. You know, so some of the highest ones are gonna be the two categories we're talking about.
So here's what I would propose. We can't go, we can't go up, we can go down. So I'm gonna write it in at ninety. But I want you to kind of leave today, think about it. Even, do you remember there are two resolutions that you approved, you approved resolution intention and then a resolution of formation? Even if you approved this number at ninety percent in the first resolution, you can still reduce it in the second resolution, but you can't increase it from those two resolutions. So I'm gonna write it in at ninety, but I want to kind of go back, think about it, and you have essentially two more decision points before we need to settle on that. Uh, but I'm noting it, and I'm gonna write it in, and we still need to discuss it. I was gonna do the seventy-five percent on the ADUs. And then I don't, we're not, we're okay on the non-residential. And then I've got the notes, the residential care homes. Uh, if they're classified as commercial by the county, they would be classified as high-hazard, non-residential. And I have to include in the resolution that this will meet the debt burden threshold set forth in the county's general plan, not to exceed one point eight percent. That's a good direction.
Yep, and I'd like to see the uh one eight, and then. I'd like to see uh how we compare to the other areas. I think that'll be favorable for us.
Okay, I'll get the somebody search on that.
Yeah, I I just think it'll be favorable.
Well, you go to.
When the dollar.
They just, they go to Roseville.
Because if we could say, I just think. But the example tax rate, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna compare probably extremely favorable.
We're all over that.
Because we're gonna be.
All it, especially since it's, they come back about the initial classification, you know, because I don't think they would be technically.
I, here's the other, but here's the other explanation.
Thank you.
The business of the ones paid.
Got it.
It's your, that's right, point of these people coming out of, out of their. That's that's common then. There'd be some county people, you know, residents that will um have to share that with an CFD or something like that. However, it's future people coming in, that's why I said, you know, they, it's Latin, you know, many people that I, that come in from, they're kind of Bay Area counties and they say. I'll pay that. I don't care. But here's the thing, and and and. You know, and definitely the two of us is that the expectation of the level of service is the same of which where they came.
That's right.
That is the big problem. They come here and they not have. Now, uh, I would say law enforcement, fire, name it, that they enjoy where they live in. Costa Cana, New York, wherever they came from, San Ramon, they have an issue with. And they don't understand that there's not the same planning mechanism. And all these things, and and so. This is a way that we can say, well, we're gonna try to get you a little closer, but we certainly can't, that just, that, that we just can't get there without going for it. Measure B, there we saw we went there. So we've gotta do like the best we can to try to bring up the listeners and provide for future boards that, because. It was gone four years ago, as we talked about earlier, and the massive hole we were in, and we had to do a lot of construction things to get there. This is another tool, toolbox. For future board, had to forbid to get into another economic deficit like we were, or anywhere close to it. Is a mature to try to reconstruct and get out of that. That's what I wanna do for the future.
Yeah, the sustainability makes full sense to me. I mean, I get that. I just, the other data point.
Remember, I mean, that was the plausible money, just then we go into a fund that's not public safety. We're not even gonna see that.
Yeah.
So it's, I mean, it's, I mean, it's not gonna be a lot of money. It's about wanting in the long run. We need a lot of growth, maybe a dollar or. All right. I think we need to pad up. It will be back with this one.
Be back.
Item B, administrative board discussion, cancel December four. This, this is not a big. We need the fire chief. And is December gonna be quiet?
That's something that usually comes to the board during the November members consideration, cancel.
Wasn't a reason we needed it.
There, there is a potential that we may need a special meeting or, or session or anything on, on how it goes with, uh, with the, who doesn't do that, any process. When it comes to that, we're in a couple of weeks. Potentially, you know, we may, we may ask that to be brought back in or, at that point, we're not there.
What about with the city when we get that check? Or from state of the, uh, of the land? Is that, do we, is that just coming in our account?
The, the ceremonial portion, I guess, somebody where, uh, my chief.
When do we get the check? If somebody knows.
Will they hand you the big thing?
I gotta run to the closest job.
Okay.
It's in the mail.
The check's.
It's in the mail.
All right, so do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Uh, just one more question. So if we do have to have it, then a special meeting can be called, right?
It would be, yeah, okay. That's the only, the potential with, with our negotiations, we may call a special meeting, but we could doodle the board and see which, which day it'll be.
I'm just, I'm thinking something that has with the CP, CSD.
No thanks.
Yeah, I, I would not just say.
So run a motion to cancel December four.
I moved to cancel the December four meeting, second?
Second.
On the paper?
Aye.
Uh, board matters, committee reports, standing committees, strategic planning, have not met. Uh, budget and finance, we haven't met, but, um, Chief Dutch sends us during the non-quarterly meetings that we have, he sent us the trend versus the budget and everything is in alignment so far. Did you see that directly, Bill?
I did, yeah, although. There, there's caution on us.
Yeah, there's caution based on inflation.
Inflation or pressures.
Which we'll see as we move on.
Right.
But right now we're trending okay, we're trending according to the budget. Um, communication and outreach.
Yeah, we met on, like, February second. And, um, I had a great discussion about collaboration work with Diamond Springs, uh, putting together a timeline. Uh, that will be on posted on Diamond Springs website, uh, collaborating with their communications group, you know, stand that up. And, uh, uh, some PowerPoints have been created on it, uh, that still need to be finalized. I guess there's some engagement with I, at, at A, uh, to help with mailing, uh, create contact that's gonna come out of the group. Um, completion of feasibility study will be in watch point to be actually utilized, communication and outreach. Um, and there's discussion about quick reaction for direction of Chief Galder and Chief Fardero for any misinformation that comes out from any, um, uninformed group as to what's not occurring and be able to address it so that it's, uh, proactively resolved, to get that right.
Got it.
Okay. And then, uh, there's discussion about the newsletter, um, and, uh, some discuss, uh, actually that just came out, thank you chief. And, um, how we could use that as, uh, maybe some small tweaks for consolidation, so that goes out to all stakeholders to keep those outside of the fire service oppressed of what's current. Uh, finance campaign in progress, uh, there was discussion about Senate built six sixty in a, uh, presentation that's been, uh, put together to identify and articulate the, uh, mentioned inequities and liabilities. And actually, I have an update on that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, um, the, uh, so Harrison Z from Assemblyman Patterson's office reached back out. They're gonna, they're gonna defer to have Senator Alvaro Gil be on point for helping to create the, the standard sign-on letter and, and talk with, uh, correspondent of Warren this morning and provided that information to her. Um, not, I didn't wanna assume that they, Patterson's a communicator, so I just said, hey, this is what I'm hearing. Uh, and I requested so that we might have a coffee meeting the week of the twenty-seventh, the first few days of the, after Thanksgiving, the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, the Monday. That's what we're looking at there, maybe to say, hey, here's how the form letter will come together. All the feedback from CSDA, Patterson's office and Gil's office, absolute great presentation.
Oh, you sent the group?
Um, yeah, they got a copy of it. And did the board get a copy?
No.
Oh, I don't remember.
Oh, on our presentation we put together?
Oh, finance?
Oh, I think I sent the presentation, uh.
Oh, sorry, thanks.
Uh, chamber.
The chamber. I think that would probably be a good thing to share.
The presentation for the, uh, six sixty we talked about, they really is being explained as well.
Oh, talk through, agree. And if, if you know what.
Just read it, it's a little bit complex.
Yeah. No, got it. It, right.
We all know what it is.
We all know what it is, what the target is. Spot on, chief. Um, so I just think the board, I don't know if that's something we want to present to the board in January to talk it through? Or should the board just get a copy of it?
I think we sent them a copy, they all know what it's all about.
Right.
I mean, the, the, they could all give the dialogue with us.
Right. Part of our communications team getting that out, so, okay. Um, so the, uh, so that's the finance campaign, recruitment staffing campaigns, all the flyers went updated. We're gonna close and remove that one from the agenda. Some statistics were in there as far as website, eighty-one hundred users, uh, nearly a hundred and ten thousand page views. Uh, the most popular page obviously is the homepage. Um, we get into some other discussions with reach as far as, um, domain, Facebook, and, and Instagram. That's all was occurring. Some good numbers, if you wanna really get into the numbers. Uh, the biggest hit, most popular Magnum Switch, that one generated, uh, what was, uh, forty-six, almost, almost forty-seven thousand views. Um, reaction sixteen hundred, comments forty-three, shares sixty-six. And the, uh, the, uh, Diamond Springs Alvaro County Operational Awareness, sixty-one, under views on Instagram, reactions standard eighteen, three comments and twelve shares. So that one got a lot of, a lot of, a lot of people were looking at, seeing what was going on. Um, YouTube, a hundred and forty-five thousand views on the channel, TikTok, thirty-two, thirty-two hundred is some change. And, um, then we had a discussion on inter-district communications and collaborations. Primary focus there's been with the, uh, Alvaro County Office of Wildfire Preparedness, uh, two-way exchange of information to ensure consistency is established in what messaging is going out. New business, um, and Chief's probably gonna get an update on this, but we talked about the, uh, capturing and posting of, um, board meetings and videos. And the update was they've been recorded, there was a couple of technicalities from administrative access that had to occur. Um, and so that's moving forward. Uh, future communications meeting, we agreed that it would be a, uh, continue to be quarterly. And I took an action item to pull it some days, which I haven't plugged in yet.
Thank you.
Nothing otherwise, and many member comments. Chief talked about, as you probably say, also Senator Gil's presentation of the check. The, um, Stroptimus event that was held, and Chief did a great job in, uh, sponsoring that, or for the district and a couple of other things, um, that.
All right. Add-on committees, facilities and equipment?
Uh, so Chief put out his due letter about the visit back to Pierce regarding the, uh, pre-built.
I think pre-built.
Pre-built, I think. So it sounds like things are on track and we'll be seeing somebody effort to start a late spring?
We should do the, uh, the final inspection, mayor, you know? And it's lining out that we'll do the three engines and the truck at the same time.
Perfect.
I'm pretty excited about that.
Uh, yes. So, yeah, let's look at that.
All right, we lose resources.
Okay, just quick update, you already got it in post-session, but we started negotiations with three five five six and dates are set moving forward. If Director Emerson gets back, we'll be, uh, attending that as a, as a, sorry, we got the direction from the board, so. More to come.
Uh, DSP, EDC annexation working.
So we had a good, uh, meeting a couple of weeks ago now, our monthly working group meeting. Um, as we talked about in the meeting, one of the things that we did, um, run into is the PERS, the, the PERS challenge. And we, we're working on a path to navigate that. And what, what PERS is, is doing is with a lot of the pension reform, with the annexation process of Diamond coming into county fire, PERS is, is viewing those people coming across as new county fire employees. So if you were a classic, you're coming in now in tier two. And from the onset of this, the goal has been to keep everybody whole, everybody at the same level. So Chief Gallagher reached out, uh, through his legal and with a PERS attorney. This, this item's been, been dealt with, I think, ten, twelve times now. It does take, um, some legislative action to, uh, to mitigate that. The previous, uh, legislation that's gone through has gone through, are opposed by PERS, or by CFP, or not. So we're working right now with, uh, Chief Gallagher's legal as well as, um, CFP. Um, once we get the documents ready and put together, our plan is to, uh, have a conversation with Senator Alvaro Gil. We'll be up here on December third. And I'm fairly confident that she will, will carry that torch for us to, to move that forward and, and expedite things. That does extend things for, for, uh, up to seven months. It could be quicker if we can get in sooner at the legislative level, offering a trailer bill or something like that that might set you sooner. But that is going to be a delay. It's, you know, everything's been clicking smooth and we, we wait for that, you know, hiccup to come along, but, uh, we'll, we'll work through and navigate through that. But it, it is something that really, it is kind of holding up as well the feasibility study, because we wanna make sure that all those things are, are documented and cleaned up and that feasibility, so we don't wanna end up signing off on the feasibility study, do it, cause the next step would be the formal application of Lab Care. We don't wanna end up in that process and then have forbid something happen at the state level where, no, we're not gonna allow that. Well, now we're rolling down the tracks and our commitment from day one has been to keep Diamond folks whole and intact. So we wanna make sure we have that buttoned up. It, it's gonna take a little bit of time, but, you know, sometimes that's, that's sort of the best thing to do. In the meantime, we're working on, um, getting the MOUs from both locals and having them start to work on what does it look like to mesh those together? Uh, we talked a lot about the, the SOGs, uh, our standard operating guidelines, Diamond's standard operating guidelines, starting to look at what needs to happen to blend those, so they're all on the same page, similar board policies and a couple of other things. Um, one of the things that I would also bring forward, we were talking about the apparatus. And I really give kudos to our apparatus committee, because they, when they went back to Pierce, they took, um, Chief Daniels from Diamond with them and, and working through that. And they're already forward thinking of, okay, we have new engines coming, a new truck coming. Under combined agency, what does this look like? And one of the things that's been brought up is, you know, historically, we've run the HME SFO chassis, the short front overhang chassis. It's a smaller chassis that's no longer available to us. So there's a conversation about what the Pierce's are coming, one of those is due to go to Station nineteen, because they need a new engine. So we, we've tried the Pierce out there once before, we know it's too big, but we're kind of handcuffed at this point. Diamond actually has, um, with engine forty-six, it's really not being used right now, it's a reserve engine. It's in good condition, around sixty, seventy thousand mile on it. Um, the apparatus committee started talking about, well, hey, let's say, engine forty-nine's getting tired. If we put one of the new Pierce's at forty-nine, take engine forty-six, put that out at station, you know, so they're actually looking at that agency as a whole, which I give them kudos to, to that forward thinking, because from an operational standpoint, it actually really makes real good sense to put that more motion engine out and, uh, pleasurable, you know, so it's a better fit out there. And then, um, look at putting one of the Pierce's to the forty-nine. So from, from the big picture, uh, you know, and there's still some things to work through on that to, to get to your cohesion on that. But, uh, I, I give kudos to the apparatus committee for having that, that forward thinking and what's, what's best for the academy. So they're working on that, um.
I need to find it.
I mean, it's, it's, it's. It's for both of them.
No, I mean, no, it's a process. And, and then I think, well, in the last meeting, I think one of the board members resigned, you know, so we're gonna have somebody.
I did get feedback that, um, Director Wire from Diamond Springs will be stepping in along with, um, director of, of process. So that will be back in two.
Any, 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 any public comments here?
I guess, I don't know.
I mean, it seems to be going smoothly, but, uh, cause I'm attending those meetings, it seems like every time something comes up, we figure, I mean, this was out of left field. I mean, there was a simple resolution where you could spike the thing, if they said that could kick it all out. It's ruined somebody's pension benefits, so we said, you can't do that. And they said, um, I think they said this administrative, uh, action, when they've done it in the past, a hundred percent of the time it's come through, so. We just have to go through the process, like get Alvaro Gil, post the, make it a, uh, administrative action and then get it approved.
It is the next legislative session now. I, 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 if there's a calendar for it, I don't have access to internet.
I believe it's January, February we want it, so that's why we're hoping that, um, timing wise, with, with Senator, gonna be here at Station twenty-five on third. Hopefully we can, if we don't have everything together, we, we're, we're, she, she's already aware.
Good shots.
Hope it's back.
In dirty impact.
Yeah. Um, she's aware of, you know, doing public safety building and stuff, the, the cooperation, what we're doing with Diamond Springs right now, how we're trying to bring this together. So this, this won't be due to her. I, I'm very confident that, uh, she'll, she'll edit that much about it, of course.
I mean, I'm pretty sure. It's just, it's just have more time to schedule, that's all.
I'll have a conversation with her at four, uh, she gives us a check for a million dollars and she rides with me on a fire truck.
Timing is, timing is.
But I think, I think the other thing is worth coming back to, chief, and I think that's one of the beauties of the working group is that, you know, we set some, at the very beginning, we set some, um, what do you wanna call it? So fundamental principles, I guess, that we didn't wanna cross a boundary. And I think the one that was, is, and I think it demonstrates it, is this whole issue with the PERS, PERS issue, I think demonstrates that we're not gonna move something forward with something being unclean and we're gonna make sure that we protect those Diamond employees and keep them whole in the process. I, to me, I, I know talking to Spencer afterwards, he was very grateful for, for the process of validating that we're gonna, we're serious about that, we're gonna protect those Diamond employees um, and keep them whole throughout the process, you know? And I, I know Chief Dutch has mentioned that multiple times, but I think it's worth, it's worth validating over again. And retired.
I'm, 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 you know, they would like to see this consolidation happen. I have a question on why, because I had a discussion with Tim the other day over at Diamond's board meeting, that you would take another fire chief off the streets that could sit in front of a border secret right, and give you a little bit of power. So now you're down, well, Tim's gonna be sitting there all by himself, no, no map. Um, I see the consolidation taking place, I don't see a lot of benefits in consolidation at this point other than the cross-training that happens between the personnel. Uh, I don't, it's kind of like revenue neutral, you're not putting any new services on, you're not hiring any new people, and you're not lowering the, the tax rate within the issue. So why do you guys want the heading?
I, 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 I could jump in there.
No, I asked now.
I'm here now. No, I could, I could jump in there, I, I've been through four things in my career. And every single time, the, the result has been an increased, um, leverage, maybe not the right position, but an increased, uh, benefit to the employees, because the employees have a larger organization, which creates more promotional opportunities, creates more, um, assignment opportunities. Um, there is always an efficiency and effectiveness, um, component that, that is gained with a merger every time. And the, even though on day one, you don't see additional resources, the opportunity exists because of increased efficiencies to. the opportunity exists because of increased efficiencies to to down the road to increase those services with a combined agency more so than with two agencies staying together. Because you're just going to, you're just going to realize a a scale of efficiency that's going to build over time.
I'm really impressed with the two districts right now on how well they collaborate in regards to their training, fire prevention and all of that. I I think it's correct. And I think that's as close to a merger as I would ever go. Just because the county is not very friendly to fire service. This county is not very friendly to fire service. They kept all the stuff. So it's, yeah, it's going to happen. Take care of us, you know, retired people. I do appreciate that. I'm very happy for you. I'm going to go back and send out a newsletter to some retirees that I stay in contact with, which is all of them. And tell them what I heard going. But I do have some comments on feasibility study. I'll give them to Gallagher on that. In regards to being historically correct as possible. All right, important to kill. And I I I talked to him in length the other day after Diamond's Board meeting. They don't take as long as you.
God love you. God love you.
But thank you for the opportunity.
Plus, we're going to go for a higher A B A rate for new construction in the Diamond District. See, we're not, we're not doing a consolidation. We're doing an annexation. So then otherwise we'd have to get the whole county to agree to this. So that would be impossible. So by just take, and now that we have the ambulance running with the P A O model, which is really working well, that's seeing it very really doing well in Diamond Springs. And and we've incorporated our own, our own, our own feeling.
But as you said earlier, I think in regards to C F D is not going to be a great, not a lot of A B A, it's not going to be a great amount of for for visiting.
Three years.
Three years.
Exactly. Oh, we're also going to possibly ask the county to kick in some more funds for that, for the for the annexation.
Well, and and that's a discussion I had with Tim the other day was if you convince the board supervisors to step up to the table to make consolidations happen with them in the county by giving up some of the A B A, giving up some of the taxes, the A B A negotiations, that would be great.
Good. So just to let you know, there's our board members that we go out two by twos and meet with all the county supervisors to tell them, let's go, because no one has been doing that. So you were saying you have less fire chiefs out there. We're going out personally, two of us at a time and talking to explain what's going on with the E M S services, J P A, our fire service, the annexation. So no, they they didn't understand the land. They are, they they're not up to speed. And they're glad that they're hearing from us that this is what's going on.
See, he's going to send you about that.
You want, how are you going to get this away from the Sheriff's Department?
Sheriff's Department probation and all of those other things that they took money and put it forward to off the back of the fire service.
Hey, we're all up to speed on that. We know. We've talked about it nineteen times.
I just echo on Chief, because I've, I've thirty-six, one, thirty-seven years fire service and not only here locally, but throughout the state of California and those local, bare man work with state. Quark agreements, consolidation, I've been through a number of these things. And I would agree with this assessment of what I've seen in the positive elements of it. See more positive than negatives. There's always these little negative elements of it, especially people thinking they lose the local control and lost the tradition of my agency support. Sometimes that happens. However, I think for the most part, I see part of our benefits as noted for employee development, employee opportunities, growth of of the agency, health of the agency, maybe the finances right now, but as I was saying, yeah, these aren't going to be big chunks, but I've seen in other agencies where that existed where they could go after a tax spend, but assessment where it brought in more money and made it a more healthy organization. So this one, I think it makes sense. I think it should have been like it was, you know, way back when and you're living last standing man of 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 the original consolidation of this. And and I think with that ability and say, we're still a number of districts versus one today, what would that look like? I know it's kind of a lot of conjecture, but I think, and I've been from the outside looking in, that overall is more positive overall and and even though you say, you know, he doesn't have an additional chief to, you know, stand by him, I think in this county, for the most part, I think the chiefs stand pretty good together. And having that larger district gives him a little bit bigger of a cheese cart, a little more power too, I think. And and also for politically, what the county board supervisors has been harping on all the districts about consolidation. This one makes the most sense, in my opinion, what I see and know. And I think that gives credibility to the chief and gives credibility to the to the solid district as a whole. You know, when you are speaking in front of this, they haven't always been friendly to the fire. I fully agree. So I'm hoping that, I I don't, I'm enthusiastic about it. I think it's going to be good. And I know even talking to employees for both districts, they're enthusiastic. And that's the proof of the point is when you see that friction between them, then you know there's a problem. And you know, it's not going to be successful. And I think one element, like you were just talking about, the PERS element of it, that's, I think, the actual proof to the employees and retirees that, hey, we are going to take care of these folks.
Well, another key point, because I've attended so many of these meetings and Chief Ogden has brought this up many times, is that would become more effective because instead of wearing six hats, you're wearing maybe only three when you're when you're working in the fire station. So people can concentrate more on what they're doing instead of jumping around going out incidents or whatever. It just becomes a more effective or the version that we can spread that.
The the people that I represent in regards to the retirees, Diamond, all go back to, we'll say, when I retired, and that's one, two years ago. But that's what they remember. It has, you know, their concerns at that, from that point in time when they retire and when I retire. Yeah, districts do change. The the demographics have changed in this county considerably. The state has really changed what fire service can do with volunteers anymore. They just don't exist. You know, when I left, I had thirty volunteers and I had nineteen day paid people in Diamond Springs. Well, you got to pay the local. There ain't how many volunteers then, right? You know, huge difference.
And we were losing firefight paramedics everywhere. That has been a real issue for all of us up there. We we were losing them to Elrato Hills, SAC, Bay Area.
You know, and I still go back and give what you pay for. And I kind of disagree a little bit. When people move up there, they have expectations. Yeah, they do. But before I move someplace, I have expectations. I moved down to Rattlesnake Bar Road in your district. And I knew my expectations for County Fire at that point in time. I will live a long ways out. They're not going to get there before my house burns down. So but and I I need to make a comment, Tim. I had a call out on our road two months ago for my neighbor. Excellent service. And the guy's walking around today, seventy-seven years old, fell off a scaffolding, broke ten ribs. And the guy's made all the right calls and did an excellent job.
The thing about D M S is that these paramedic, police paramedics around the areas, we have two paramedics instead of the one paramedic as a basic life support. So the service increases. But it's further out.
I was one of the first paramedics in this county.
Yeah.
So I know what that service is all about. I fought really hard for Service Area Seven. I don't like to go sitting on lots of cash right now, but.
We should bring you out. That's a whole nother discussion. Come to, come to the J P A.
No, I don't want to. In fact, I was a actually, Mickey, it was my fault. J P A was every form.
Really? Okay, I'll hold you responsible.
Yeah, because I went to a board meeting. Mark Nielsen was the chair. We were going in for dispatch. I said, can you have a new dispatch? We want to go to Cal Fire. And he said, fine. And Mark didn't even ask me at that time. He said, well, why don't we just do an ambulance J P A? How am I going to get out of this? So, but anyway.
All right, great. Thanks. All right. Correspondence and communications. Hi, Andrew. Responsible for the medical.
Name is Chairman. Within your packet, you'll see the the monthly stats for all of our engine companies and our medic units for the month of October. The engine companies ran a total of six hundred eighty-nine calls. Medic units ran a total of one thousand four hundred thirty-two calls. Calls are kind of plateaued. The crews are still busy. But, you know, it kind of ebbs and flows. This is kind of what we usually call that shoulder season where they're, you know, October, the kind of summer's winding down. The crews have been really busy. They've done a phenomenal job. They've had, you know, unfortunately, some some challenging calls for our crews. One of the stations had a P D code, an infant. It was a C P R call that, you know, did not turn out well. Did percolance and stress regen for those folks. Not only our folks, it involves the folks from Campbell Park and they brought in dispatchers and things like that as well to kind of mitigate through that. So they've had some challenging calls in that arena. They've had some challenging calls, extracations and stuff, but saw them all the other day firsthand, but they're doing really well. And, you know, all the stats are in your in your bag. And if you have any questions, you're going to have to ask.
Yeah, I sort of come on, I was the second person on scene on forty-nine with a truck went over, re-credit that was famous. And they got this, rolling out of the vehicle on.
Chief, were we involved with the star unit that had a tree fall on it? They were ordered yesterday, I think it was.
We had a couple of our units that were dispatched to that. It was in Pioneer Fire District. The battalion forty-eight heard a call and headed on that way as well because, you know, Pioneer doesn't have a chief officer response most of the times to give nature of this. And we did send chief officer out there as well. I didn't have any feedback yet. I think I saw a Porsche engine was first on scene. And so I've given up that I would do so of yours. So then we also had some communication from retired Captain Jim Moore. As you recall, we donated an engine to that Old Lake Volunteer Fire Department in Montana. He's pleased to reason. Let us know since late June. He's had three calls. So unless you're a two vehicle accident, it's a strong fire.
Yeah. Have to own test.
They have to have it. And if we have any more, they're they're interested. We'll become the
Yeah, I think he was asking, you know, to be submitted under the activities that might come everybody.
They've also got a a nice little thank you. It's in your packet from Elrato High School. Make sure they brought back the home early grade. They reached out to us for engines. We had one of our programs there. You know, some students and then they have a lot of our ones. So they sent that. Those were the only.
Okay, thank you. Item fourteen, fire chief report.
So a couple of things. We continue to work with the city staff on potential land acquisition for the public safety building. With regards to the the funds that are coming from the state, I actually received some paperwork from the state O B S last week. Completed that and sending it. So that's a good sign. I don't know if that means the shuttle actually can this week or in six months, but we got a last submitted it. As reported on December third is the possible thing of Christmas parade. Adrian and Senator Alroth Gill at Station twenty-five at eleven A M. She can do a certain amount of all check presentation. I shared that information with city manager for city councils, who may ask some events for that as well. Alroth Gill's office and her staff, some of them will be on one of our engine. They also asked if she wanted to have like an information booth there as well. So she'll have a little booth at twenty-five. They have hot chocolate and cookies and her staff being there for the parade. We're also working with city and developer on a couple of projects, primarily up on Upper Broadway. I've had a couple of meetings, mainly the private mansion bureau. And then we're also now starting the pre-planning with the possible fire safety council for their annual fire safety event. It'll be in March. County Fire is one of the sponsoring agencies for that event. So they have the ability to use our logo on their flyers and stuff. They'll be pushing out to the to the community. As far as the J P A goes, the board was presenting the draft feasibility study from Pitch and Associates at our last meeting. A lot of good information on that. We'll have to start making decisions moving towards the J P A. And then the J P A, the new director has hired an administrative assistant that just started this week. And they're still looking into some form of an operational manager position with the J P A as well. As far as the district, as reported, we, the Christmas parade, same place, we'll have a couple of our engines as well as honor of participating in that. We did have a reach out from the Seroptimus Club to auction off a dinner and firehouse. The auction brought twenty-two hundred dollars into the group and their funds are going in support of victims of human trafficking. Station twenty-eight on Seashift is handling that and that will be on November twentieth. So that I I met with them yesterday. The menu lined out. They're all, they're all set, ready to go. Chief Daniels, who's the duty battalion forty-eight C, is making the arrangements to be able to pull that engine out of service, cover the line. So they they're going to obviously need time to build a cookie and preparing and actually be there. So we're working on that. We did receive a donation of chainsaws from Cal Fire and Chief Brown for always. There's, we've got about fifteen right now. Those are out. Our apparatus folks are working on kind of cleaning up and the stuff that they need for those. Those primarily will end up on like our type threes. A couple of them will go on the new truck, a couple of them go to the training grounds. So there's specific saws for the training site. And actually probably a couple of them in chief rigs during the during the winter time because we've turned to a couple of challenges over the years of that. So and then three of them so far also going down the spring. We're kind of augmenting their their capabilities as well. We have two additional firefighter paramedics and two P A Os that will start their onboarding and accreditation on the River twenty-seven. With those foreign individuals coming on, we'll be full staffing. So hopefully the trend stays that way. I will say that we have probie valves coming up. I think it's that same one with twenty-seven. There's a total of four. Two of them will be there twelve months. And so if all goes well for them, we'll actually only have two people on districts as well as some of the P A Os that are on probation. So on the fire side of the house, we'll only have two people on probation is pretty wow. Yeah, it's, it wasn't that long ago that those evals had twenty people, twenty-three people at one point, which is, you know, almost half the force. So great strides in that and and doing well there. So with that, our P A O bridge program, we have three of them. They've moved, they're going through all their suppression training right now at Station nineteen. Fire personnel have put in a lot of time getting those folks trained up, talking to them. It's it's going well. Those those three individuals are energized, really going hope going with that. They're targeting May for their, they have to do a third party capstone testing to basically quantify everything they've learned. And that that will take place in May at Sierra College. We're continuing to work with Camp Park C S D. We provided them all the information that Tri was requesting. We did have a two by two with them last last week. Last week, I think. And it was actually, you know, hindsight's always point twenty. And I wish they would have had that two by two at the very onset of this because it was actually just some really good dialogue. They really gave Director Ogden and Director Bill Chris and and us the opportunity to what do you guys need? I mean, what are you looking for? I mean, beyond, we know they want to keep those stations open, but you know, having just really some decent dialogue. We are looking to schedule another one with them. I've sent a message, I replied back to Don Ashen, a consultant. I have not heard back from him, but just entering some good dialogue with him and we'll we'll see what they end up doing. Chief Gallagher and I will be scheduling captains meetings in December. What's getting around? Just meeting with all the captains on all the ships and usually it's about a two hour meeting. It's just a good, good roundtable discussions to do all the captains in the meeting. We try to do it a couple of times a year. So this will be good. And then we just completed our annual station bidding. That's always a good entertainment thing for the district. So that's always been time. That movement will take place in mid-January. So other than that, that's in the report. Happy to answer your questions.
Any questions? About item fifteen, board comments.
Were you right there? I was kidding. I've got some notes.
No, wait, don't start off and do it. I'll have anything later. They'll go for it.
So Bert, Brent and I met with Lori Carlin. We're scheduled for an hour, went for actually about an hour and a half. She did, yeah, I was kidding. I went through the PowerPoint presentation that she'll get a copy of. And talked about files, fire, some of the challenges that are occurring with. And um, talked about uh, files, fire, some of the challenges that are occurring with. The medic unit leaving Cameron Park, some of the other challenges that Cameron Park is having. And uh, the county fire would be there, we weren't representing, but as it was stated, would support as best could and so forth for the community services. Majority of discussions on J P A, yeah, significant is um. Concerns with the membership, all the members were expressed. As far as who, who gets to represent, how can that be more fairly or equitably um, done? Uh, the delayed response that her residents are gonna see at twenty eight and then she lives right around the corner from twenty eight. Um, and that's what the unit being relocated down to, is it eighty basis, eighty six? And uh, talk about the K A Os and the single role and how that's been real beneficial where we. Where county fire took the approach to make sure that it's one family. And we're gonna shortchange someone just because in uh, that culture is not going forward. Those are the inside guy.
Yeah, and then the, the other tailing in there, we did talk about the um, annexation quite a bit. She has a question about that and, and you know, some. The typical rumor mill and, and all that. And we were able to um. You know, and quote, a lot of that, that was just hyperbole and um, there's some good direct questions about how certainly the Morgan look and. And then to show, you know, just talking about the collaborative effort like we already discussed with the, you know, the noise training. And even though the districts have always worked very closely together. Where this could go and what, what we're doing now in that process. And, and then also crossing over with the J P A is how that was a true, I think, asset test. Of how this annexation will work and is collaborative that be able to help restore many forty nine. So not of, how it affected the overall system. But also now provided services back to the community of Diamond Springs, El Dorado. Um. And to, you know, working side by side where we have. Not very often can you do this where you have one district's employees working with other districts' employees under their roof. And that it's, it's been a very successful program that way. And, and to show that. Being locked up together, working together is, is one for the process. Um, yeah, that was a good thing. She, you know, she had some various, various questions, just random stuff here and there. Um. And there's a bit of data to it and uh, listen, that's, that's a lot of, I think, pretty good questions and. And there was always, was really good the dispelling of a lot of rumors or conjecture. Um, and, and I think she appreciated it, took a lot of notes. She, she highlighted, she understood the risks that Cameron Park, if anything closes there. Spot on and, and took some copious notes, I thought, in that area. And recognizes what an impact it'd be. And then just something goes out of service. Yeah, no, I, I, I think it was uh, good, you know, I, I think committed to that, you know, in the future, whether it's even a couple of times a year or as needed. You know, I think at first it's like, okay, what do you guys is angle here? What are you getting at? But I think we should have just hate open conversation. Um, and, and information sharing. I, I think she appreciated that. Looking forward. So for those of you still, we went forward to do it. I, at least I don't have to speak, you know, how the others will take it, but I think she was very accepted. I guarantee that. I'm sure she was hit up by her counterparts of the board supervisors, okay, what was that about? How'd that go? And I'm sure she's sharing what we're sharing now is, is a bit of a dialogue.
Well, and outcome of that. Now wants to meet with you and I. You happen to be in the office and it's like, oh, look at us, what's going on here? That's great. That's good to hear.
We go down the whole list.
Yes. Well, and Jim, Jim's arranging a, a meeting with uh, Brooke.
Anybody else?
Um, I've got one that's kind of, it was brought to me and uh, Chief, that gentleman, Ron. Um, he's uh, he, he was wanting to talk about uh, paramedics first able to help with. Controlling uh, uh, it's controlled substance, security aspect with them.
A lock monster?
Yeah, a lock monster. So he, he approached me and asked, what is county fire doing relative to the opioid set- settlement? I guess twenty six billion dollars has been put out there for the next seventeen years. And El Dorado County is supposed to get one point two six of that. Going for the next seventeen years. And he thinks that, and I guess he told, he held H H S, talked about, he said, county fire, I'd have some of that. Opioid money because of what we do with our medic units and so forth. And, and our paramedic first on scene for any drug things. He just thought that was something there. And I don't know if that's something we've looked at, if it was even on our radar or, I don't. I, I guess the sheriff's office, supply, Marshall Hospital, uh, three other agencies. And, and, and they're, and helping human services. We, and he projected. That there's at least twenty thousand dollars there available.
Why don't you go to the J P A?
So, well, some, but if we've got medics on an engine.
Was there a settlement or something like that?
No, it came from, it was a um, opioid settlement at a federal level. Twenty six billion dollars. And so they're dealing it out to all the states and. Yeah, so um, and um, this, um, so let's leave it. Yeah, he, he had a conversation with her and he really, he pulled me aside, so. That's it.
And a report.
I, I thought it was, I was at that last J P A meeting and it was really interesting when they gave their, their uh. Study about the J P A and they were talking about response times. It was, and how. They're not collecting enough or the ambulance is going out there. They showed the rates that were not collecting, we're way low. No, but then the county official that was there says, oh no, we have, we have plenty of money for that. We have, we, we, we're not stressing. The J P A doesn't happen, but the county's sitting with all this money. And she said that, she took offense to saying, no, there was not an uh, you know, that there's not enough money in the system. So we're gonna have to tap into that.
I think we educated supervisors in our discussion. Cause we did. Tied into that a little bit with uh. That, that conversion of the J P A funds versus service area seven collective.
Anybody else? Is it? Uh, future agenda items?
January.
January.